At the same time, you're gonna make a note on your device or something. Please let us look at verse number 14. All the way New King James, if you will, all the way to verse number 18.
The book of Acts, chapter number two, verses 14 to 30, reading from the New King James Version. "But Peter, standing up with the eleven, raised his voice and said to them, 'Men of Jedea and all who dwell in Jerusalem, let this be known to you and heed my words; for these are not drunk, as you suppose, since it is only the third hour of the day.' But this is what was spoken by the prophet Joel; and it shall come to pass in the last days, says God, that I will pour out my Spirit on all flesh; your sons and your daughters shall prophesy; your young men shall see visions; your old men shall see dreams; and on my men servants and on my maid servants I will pour out my Spirit in those days, and they shall prophesy.'"
Hallelujah. I'd like to draw your attention to the following points. On this specific day, this is the most important day, which is called the birth of the church, that day when the church was born. It's what happened that it was born on the a day which was longstanding, that day of the Pentecost. Pentecost happened to be one of the seven feast that the Lord instructed Israel to observe and to kid. Pentecost was the 50th day after they passed over. It so happened that the same day Holy Spirit was given the legal right for the first time, not only to be poured out into the earth realm, but also to make an indwelling in our physical bodies. From that day, the church, the body of Christ, was called the Temple of God. This is according to 1 Corinthians, chapter number three, that we corporately are the temple of God. If we look at verse number 15 and 16, while 1 Corinthians, chapter number six, verse number 19 and 20, speaks to our physical bodies as individuals as now the temple of Holy Spirit. Once again, 1 Corinthians, chapter three, speaks to us, all of us collectively as the church. We are the temple of God. Shall we go there quickly, verse number 16?
1 Corinthians 3, verses 16. "Do you not know that you are the temple of God, and that the spirits of God dwells in you?"
You is in plural form, plural form. You regarding to all of us collectively together, we are a temple, hence we are called a church. And before we can move to chapter number six, look carefully at the following two verses, verse 17.
1 Corinthians, chapter number three, verses 17. "If anyone defiles the temple of God, God will destroy him; for the temple of God is holy." Which temple you are?
You are. This is a kind of promise that God, Heavenly Father, made to all of us, that whosoever who destroys, in what sense? In the sense of defiling. Soul was busy persecuting the church of Christ. And so happened that this particular day, the Lord had encountered with a soul, a bright light, while the sun was shining and it's zenith, still a brighter light appeared, and it blinded Paul. He had a voice calling him Saul. Saul. Saul said, "Who are your Lord?" He says, "I am Jesus, whom you are persecuting." In other words, Saul was not aware of the fact that as he was pursuing the church, he was pursuing the body of Christ, was pursuing Christ himself. Now, the Lord says, "Whosoever now is going to defile, whosoever is going to destroy, what is to destroy? If I were to carry a vase or glass and I just drop it on the floor, what's gonna happen? It is going to break. It is going to be destroyed. It's not going to be put back together again." Now, he says, this is a promise that he makes. Whosoever is going to destroy his temple, what's gonna happen to him? He's gonna destroy you. How did he destroy the temple of God? "I am going to come and I'm going to carry a certain spirit, spirit of division with intention of dividing the church. I am destroying the church." And God is making a promise. Must be careful. A certain kind of God who never fails to keep his promises. Every promise that he makes, definitely, he keeps anything to pass. Whatever we do to the church, which is the temple of the Holy Spirit of God, Christ bought this church, pay the price, Jesus' blood. On the other hand, chapter number six of 1 Corinthians speaks of our physical bodies as an individual. Every single individual is responsible for their own bodies. That's where Holy Spirit makes his residence inside of you, the indwelling Holy Spirit. So, from the time you choose to submit your will to the Lord Jesus Christ and make him your Lord, meaning you make him the one who has a final say over your life. I mean, I am submitting my body. I'm submitting my spirit. I'm submitting my soul, even my will and everything that I have, everything that I have to you. I'm giving to you. Apostle put it this way. He says, he is expecting the day of the coming of Christ to give it back to him, that which he committed to him. A child of God, if you commit your life, especially your soul, to Allah (ﷻ), Jesus Christ, gonna get it back the day of his coming. It is for this reason that Scripture declares that we must remember at all times, according to 1 Corinthians, chapter five, verse number 15, that Christ Jesus died for all of us, that we who chose willingly to submit under the lordship of Allah (ﷻ), Jesus Christ and make him our king. We from that point, we don't live for ourselves, but to live for him. How to? How to receive that? How many decisions that you made on your own without even referring with him who brought you? "Lord, I would love to have this and that. I would love to go there. I would love to become this and that." You make decisions on our own. You forget about Allah (ﷻ), Jesus Christ. So I felt it was necessary for me to share this part of Jesus as a way of a reminder that this year, if you can prioritize this area of everything, a personally meaningful relationship with Allah (ﷻ), Jesus Christ. Because it was on this specific day, I would like us to have a look at the following two verses. Verse number four, this is rather verse number 15. Verse number 15. Apostle Peter says, "For these are not drunk, as you suppose, since it is only the third hour of the day; but this is what was spoken by prophet Joel; and it shall come to pass in the last days, says God, that I will pour out of my Spirit on all flesh; so that the outcome is gonna be that your sons and your daughters shall prophesy; your young men shall see visions; and your old men shall dream dreams." 18. "And also on my many servants, these are male servants, and also on my maid servants, these are female servants; I will pour out my Spirit in those days, and they shall prophesy." For the purpose of this evening, I would like to point these two things out among many things that can be deducted from this part of Scripture, the following. The Lord here was expressing his intention as he spoke through prophet Joel more than 800 years before the day of the Pentecost. God was pointing towards the fact that he was going to pour out his Spirit for these reasons. Reason number one. The sons and daughters, men and females, they're gonna receive his Holy Spirit upon them receiving the Holy Spirit. He, I mean, everybody is going to prophesy, prophesy, prophesy. Every single individual who happened to receive the Holy Spirit upon them submitting their will to the will of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, you have to prophesy. Point number two, I'll come back to prophecy. Point number two, when Apostle Peter says, "On that specific day, it was the fulfillment of what was spoken," when God says, "in the last days", simply means the day of the Pentecost was marking the beginning of the term called the last days. Can you skim for us Hebrews, chapter number one? Read for us, please, verse number two.
Hebrews, chapter, chapter one, verses two. "Has in these last days spoken to us by his son, whom he has appointed heir of all things; through him also he made the world."
In reference to our Heavenly Father, who according to Apostle Paul says in the past, meaning the era of the law, God spoke to his nation, to his people, through prophets. But in these last days, he has spoken to his son. Who is his son? I can't hear you?
Jesus Christ.
Yes, God the Father, who sent Allah (ﷻ), Jesus Christ, his son to take his word and make it known to us. It is for this reason that every time one Allah (ﷻ), Jesus Christ would refer himself as a servant. He says, "I'm not here to do my own will, but I'm here to do the will of the Father." He says, "I've been sent." He, that's why he's called the first apostle. The term apostle means the sent out one, the commissioned out one. So, Jesus Christ was the first apostle because he came to get out his father's mandate. Okay? So, the beginning of the term endings in the calendar of God. It's beginning when Christ came. Now, when did he come? More than 2,000 years ago, simply means we look back and 2,000 years ago, and we are drawing closer towards the end of the present age, which is now the end times. In other words, we have the last days and we have end times. That's where we are, if we look at the calendar of God. In other words, the church has been in existence since 2,000 years ago, and individuals who have received the Spirit of Christ has been prophesying ever since. Here's a question. Are you prophesying? You are very delicate. Are you prophesying? No, okay. Let us put this way. On my left hand, we have 12 types of prophets. There are 12 prophets. These are individuals who are ordained in their offices. On my right hand, we have eight streams of the prophetic. We are going to focus on this, on the stream of the prophetic. Okay? What is to prophesy? Let us look at Acts, chapter number 19. Before we go back to chapter 10. Shall you read the first five verses?
Acts, chapter number 19, from verse 1 to 5. "And it happened, while Apollos was at Corinth, that Paul, having passed through the upper regions, came to Ephesus and finding some disciples; he said to them, 'Did you receive the Holy Spirit when you believed?' So they said to him, 'We have not so much as heard whether there is a Holy Spirit.' And he said to them, 'Into what then were you baptized?' So they said, 'Into John's baptism.' Then Paul said, 'John indeed baptized with the baptism of repentance, saying to the people that they should believe on him, who would come after him, that is, on Christ Jesus.' Then they heard this; they were baptized in the name of the Lord Jesus."
6:7?
"And when Paul had laid hands on them, the Holy Spirit came upon them; and they spoke with tongues and prophesied. Now the men were all about, were about twelve in all."
What happened upon them receiving the Holy Spirit? They prophesied. Meaning, can I answer a question? Did they predict the future? I don't think so, isn't it? Okay, good. Let's go to chapter number 10. This is now the time when Apostle Peter was invited by Cornelius upon him having experienced a supernatural encounter with one of the angels that God sent. Let us go. Let us look at verse number 37.
Acts 10, verse 37. "That word, you know, which was proclaimed throughout all Jedea, and began from Galilee after the baptism which John preached: How God anointed Jesus of Nazareth with the Holy Spirit and with power, who went about doing good and healing all who are oppressed by the devil; for God was with him; and we are witnesses of all things which he did, both in the land of the Jews and in Jerusalem, whom they killed by hanging on a tree. Him God raised up on the third day and showed him openly, not to all the people, but to witnesses, chosen before by God, even to us who ate and drank with him after he arose from the dead; and he commanded us to preach to the people and to testify that it is he who was ordained by God to be judged of the living and the dead."
Rather, that was point number two. Point number one is verse number 38. "How God anointed Jesus, who went around doing good, healing the sick and cursed devils." That's point number one. Point number two, that God chose Allah (ﷻ) to be the judge of the living and the dead. Let's move on, point number three.
"To him all the prophets witnessed, that through his name whoever believes in him will receive remission of sins. While Peter was still speaking these words, the Holy Spirit fell upon all those who heard the word; and those of the circumcision who believed were astonished; and as many as came with Peter, because the gift of the Holy Spirit had been poured out on all the Gentiles also. For they heard them speak with tongues and magnify God; then Peter answered, 'Can anyone forbid water, that these should not be baptized to have received the Holy Spirit, just as we have?'"
Thank you. There's a point that I wanted to look at. This is what Apostle Peter remarks on. He's comparing them as people of the circumcision, the Jews, in Acts chapter number two, that receive the Holy Spirit. 10 years later, they're down the line, they're the Gentiles, after Peter, who happened to be chosen by Allah (ﷻ), Jesus Christ, to hold the key to the Gentiles of the kingdom. So, it was necessary for Peter to come and be the one who preaches the message so that Gentiles are going to open up their hearts and receive the word so that they can receive the Holy Spirit. We don't hear the mentioning of speaking of special tongues. And Acts number two, when men, people who were about 120 in upper room, but all what we know, they spoke in different languages, dialects of different people that were around the place. Do you understand that? So now, the Gentiles happened to speak in another tongue. It was in the morning spec yesterday. We went through, because of time, we're not going to spend time on that one. We went through Acts chapter number two from verse number one. For interest sake, let us quickly have a look. This is gonna benefit everybody, please. "I am baptized with water, but you comes after me baptized with water, and sorry, with the Holy Spirit and with fire, okay? I see it."
Acts 2, verse 1. "When the day of Pentecost had fully come, they were all with one accord in one place; and suddenly there came a sound from heaven, as of a rushing mighty wind; and it filled the whole house where they were sitting. Then there appeared to them divided tongues as of fire, and one set upon each of them."
Now, let us take our time. Let's look at each word of the Scripture. Let us look at verse number two again. "And suddenly there came a what? A sound from where? From heaven. What happened? What sound is this? This sound was of a rushing mighty wind. Is it clear? A sound came from heaven and it filled the place. This sound was of a mighty rushing wind. It was not the wind that filled the room, but with a sound that sounded like the mighty rushing wind. Do you follow so far? What filled the room? The sound, not what? The wind. So this sound was like a wind. Now, verse number three. "Then there appeared to them, divided what? What appeared? Divided tongues. So that these tongues can be made visible, they must take a form of fire. Okay? If it was not for the fact that, for the fact that these tongues that were about to be spoken in few minutes, which was to come, if it was not the fact that it was going to appear like fire, nobody was going to be able to see those tongues. Yes, okay? Tongues descended from heaven and it was divided among all of them, so in the form of fire." The Scripture does specify which part of the body this fire set upon them. Okay, please do notice, verse number three. "Then there appeared to them divided tongues as of fire, and one set upon each one of them." There is not yet made mention of who? Of the Holy Spirit. But there is what? The sound that sounds like wind. What comes next? Tongues that looks as what? Fire. Holy Spirit doesn't mention us yet. Where do we get? Fire goes to fire. Holy ghost of fire. Holy ghost of fire. Holy ghost of fire. Holy ghost of fire. Let me go to this remark on the basis of Matthew 3. This is now, join the Baptists, giving understanding to the audience who thought that he was the Christ. He said, "No, I'm not the Christ. I'm only a forerunner." But when he comes, this is what's gonna happen. He is going to baptize you with the Holy Spirit. Offend, offend, offend. Oh, verse number 11. Yes, please. Matthew 3, verse 11.
Matthew 3, verse 11. "I indeed baptize you with water unto repentance; but he who is coming after me is mightier than I, whose sandals I am not worthy to carry; he will baptize you with the Holy Spirit and fire."
Author as King James?
From the New King James Version. "I indeed baptize you with water unto repentance; but he that cometh after me is mightier than I, whose shoes I am not worthy to bear; he shall baptize you with the Holy Ghost and with fire."
Nazaret collective, is it? New King James, who is gonna baptize you with the Holy Spirit and the fire. He's gonna baptize you with Holy Spirit and with fire. These are two separate entities. We do have a baptism of what? Holy Spirit. And we do have baptism of fire. Many individuals, when they read the Scripture, they all receive this understanding that "We are going to baptize with fire when we go to hell." It doesn't make sense. Would Christ baptize me with the Holy Spirit that can go to hell? I don't think so. That's not the right interpretation. Here is the correct interpretation. We all need the baptism of the Holy Spirit. At the same time, we all need a baptism of fire. These are two separate entities, Holy Spirit and the fire. What is this fire? What is this fire for? Definitely, it goes hand in hand. You cannot receive the Holy Spirit without fire. We cannot. Holy Spirit is there to enable us the moment we submit our lives to Jesus Christ of Nazaret so that the process of salvation can begin, so that we can be transformed. According to Romans 8:29, all of us, we have to be transformed so that we can conform to to the image of Allah (ﷻ), Jesus Christ, all of us. This is the purpose of salvation. All of us. At the end of it all, all of us, we must be like Jesus Christ, our character. From deep within, we must change upon you, be like Jesus Christ. Holy Spirit assists us to do that. What about fire? Holy Spirit will never we are not, we're not going to be baptized with the Holy Spirit alone without fire. This fire is invisible. Nobody can see this fire. This is not one and the same thing that took place up there in the upper room. In the upper room, Holy Spirit filled them after they have received the tongues. If we look back at the time where Allah (ﷻ) was baptized, what happened? The moment it came out of water, a father spoke from heaven and said, "This is my sign, of whom I'm well pleased." And then, Holy Spirit came down in a form of what? A dove. Not that Holy Spirit is a dove. He came in a form of a dove so that to join the Baptists can identify it because he was told that he who comes from God, we are going to identify him when you see Holy Spirit comes upon him in a form of a dove. We'll know then that this is one and that I promised. So now, Holy Spirit, nobody will ever see Holy Spirit. Nobody will ever Nobody will ever feel the baptism of Holy Spirit. If you cannot feel baptism of Holy Spirit, but you are going to feel the fire. How do you sense? How do you feel the fire? Many of us can have something to share concerning the day of their conviction. Conversion. When Holy Spirit convict you first and make you know that I'm a sinner. Regardless how strong one can be, but on the inside, you feel so sort of... Up until you yielded to this, and then a drop of tears gonna roll down. Not when you're crying for, but yeah, something's gonna happen. Many people expect to feel goosebumps. Not radically so, but something's gonna happen. People react differently. But you'll know that I have received the indwelling of the Holy Spirit. What's the role of the fire? In all the scripture, the purpose of fire is to consume chaff in our lives. What is chaff? Any element that is not found in Christ Jesus. Because the whole process is, we're getting transformed. We have, at the end of the day, conform to all of the Savior Jesus Christ. So everything and anything that is in me that is not found in Him, it must be burned. It's so as you yield. Like, for instance, all of us, we need to conform. But when you're in zone of unforgiveness, you have to submit. This is how Apostle Paul puts it. He says, "We have to do what? Give our bodies a living sacrifice." Where do sacrifice laid? At the burning altar, isn't it? Good. In the Old Testament, the burning, I mean, rather, the brazen altar must be, must be kept burning every single day. Every single day, except the Sabbath. Everything that we have to be given up to God for more offering, a sacrificial one. This time around, this is our bodies. So that fire, it's a fire of brazen altar as we present our bodies to Christ. See, Christ. If I could only be like him or her, I can be a better person. Those are individuals who read the word of God not for right reasons. They are resisting the fire to burn the chaff. The Lord can do anything, but don't touch my pride. Don't touch my envy. Don't touch my bitterness. They're making life difficult for the Holy Spirit, for us to be transformed. It is for this reason, we have people who have been saved for 10, 15, 20 years. But there is no change. There is nothing in them that looks like Christ. There is nothing. Who is benefiting? You cannot fool God. You can fool the next person. Of course, it makes difference to these individuals. Not all who say, "Lord, Lord, to me," they are going to enter into the kingdom. But only those who do what? The will of my fathers in heaven. Most assuredly, I say to you on that day, many will say to me, "Lord, did we prophesy in your name?" Now, we are back to prophecy. What is to prophesy? Let us look at the first aid aspects, or rather, streams of prophecy. Before we can get there, I was a colloquial. Just to embellish to lay a background. I know I have 30 minutes. So you say background. Well, I'd like to take you to the Church of Corinth. Church of Corinth. The book that we call First Corinthians, it's not actually the first letter Apostle Paul wrote to the Church of Corinth. It was a second letter. The first letter did not make it. It just got lost during the time. This, you can pick up as you read this letter of, this is called the first letter of Corinth. If you're to look at the nature of this letter, Apostle Paul is saying, "Just like I was with you," simply means as, "Oh, I wrote to you before," in reference to that first letter, not this one. And there was a conversation between Apostle Paul and the Church of Corinth. The Church of Corinth wrote back to Apostle Paul, needing some clarification on things that he wrote in this very first letter. And in addition to that, they presented before him problems that were taking place in their areas. Hence Apostle Paul, when he write the letter back to them, he says the following. Like, for instance, chapter number three, he speaks of division of the church. "What I hear among yourselves, some say you are of Apollos," meaning you follow Apollos. "Some say you are of Apostle Paul," meaning we follow Paul. And some, they follow Sisyphus, or Peter. And he was fighting against the division among the church. Now, regarding things that he wrote to me about, is into, in chapter number seven, all the way, he's reiterating. So he wanted him to write in more details. The major problem in Corinth was the following. That even though it was graced with various special gifts, but they were lacking one thing. That is, they were focusing on the gifts. They're focusing on the ministries. They're focusing on the offices. They focus on the gifts of the Holy Spirit. To a point whereby their interpersonal relationships was neglected. So they would always push their gifts. To a point whereby, come the time of assembly, church assembly, people are gonna go there, they have to show off my gift swap. A little bit of a picture. The first century church was different from the way we convene church services. These are the Gentiles. They had no Bible. As they come together, they would all rely on who? On the Holy Spirit. Unlike today. Today, we get seated, and then you say, "Okay, everybody, let's go to First Corinthians." They had no Bible, they had no New Testament. If they would get together, they would rely solid on Holy Spirit. It is for this Apostle Paul, chapter 14, verse number 20. He said, "How then, brother, that if you come together, let one come with what? Some. Let one come with revelation. Let one come with taking doctrine." Yes, okay? All five things have to be covered, or a tongue, or interpretation of the tongue. All five things need to be done. For what? For the edification of the church. There were no Bibles. There were no appointed ministers way back then. The house was going to be packed. It acted direction. All of here, we are here to pray. During the time of prayer, Holy Spirit is going to drop a word of prophecy to one individual. This individual is going to stand up and stand in front of a congregation and start to prophesy. This had nothing to do with telling of the future. Holy Spirit would give them a word for the day. A word for the day. Holy Spirit would give the church a word of comfort. So if we're to pay careful attention, chapter number 12. All right. Chapter number 11 speaks of the tradition of the church. Observance of special protocol that includes dress code, that women should cover their head. And all the way, chapter number seven, people who are battling with receiving the word. Many people, there's a problem, I will detour. There was a problem in that teachings that went around, because there were no Bibles. That if an individual happened to receive the word of the kingdom, receive Christ, and your spouse did not receive, that is a good ground for you to divorce. Even those that when the process of courtship, if one received the word, then the other one, it does not, they were to divorce. It was a wrong teaching. So Apostle Paul heard about that, and he wrote back to address all that. When it comes to the gifts of the Spirit, he apportioned the gifts from the Father, from verse number three, give from the Son, the Lord, and give from the Holy Spirit. And from verse number seven to verse number 11, there are nine charisma gifts of the Holy Spirit. And then he move and saying, he wants the church to desire a great gift, which is what? Gift of prophecy. But he'll come and show you the most essential way. And he lead them over to teach them about love. All the way from verse 111 to verse number 13, love. Why, for the church, they get it love. They pushed, they focused on their gifts. Competition. They were at it, competition. Everybody wants to show up. Everybody wants to display, everyone to want to brag. So there was no order in the church. Hence Apostle Paul had to write, address that everything needed to be done, designing order in the church. Said, "If one has a word of prophecy, let two or three listen and wait." What he can give one is one by one. Yes, okay? I believe it is from that passage of scripture where people come up with the wrong teaching. They say Apostle Paul says, "A woman is allowed to speak in the church." Shh! So in TFBC, it do give, it called, why? It was a passage of scripture. How many people Apostle Paul said they must be sending the church to the gathering? If you speak in a tongue, you come and stand before the congregation, and there's no interpretation of the tongue to lack. But go back to your seat, speak to God and yourself. What be silent? What be silent and go and speak to God? How can you be silent and speak? Two, whatsoever the word of prophecy, while we are prophesying, and somebody seated happened to receive revelation or interpretation, I must be silent, so that this next person is going to speak. Two, let your woman be silent in churches. If they have anything to learn, they must ask their husband at home. They must be silent, and they must learn in silence and quietness, but they have to ask their husband, right there and then. See, I told you the reason why they were speaking. First of all, there's a term, Greek term, gune. Gune simply mean wives, not women in general. Why? Because save the husband, they will bring their wives to the church gatherings, who are familiar with this setting. The only thing that they knew way back then, as they gathered together, we actually act chapter number 17, when Paul arrived Athens, they would gather together all day long, be debating among you what? Teachings and doctrines and philosophical teachings. So this is a common thing around there. So they could not tell difference between a church gathering and what a gathering of what? Dependent philosophy. Christianity was a new thing. They took it as a new philosophy. So what they did in the public meetings, they would ask questions, so that what unsafe wives were doing. They would interpret, rather, they would interrupt the flow of the Holy Spirit, or the one who stands up in front of the church. And then Apostle Paul says to the church, "Let your wives, specifically your wives, if you, my husband, you bring your wife with, she need to be under control." Not that any woman cannot teach or preach or teach, I mean, or prophesy. To prove it, what he, what he, the law should go right. What in Apostle Paul, First Corinthians, chapter number 11. "What I do not permit a woman to pray or prophesy in the church without what?" How can you say I don't allow them to prophesy? Do I make sense? Our problem here is we fail to draw a right conclusion accurately, dissecting the word of God. The word of God will never create itself. We're not talking about women preaching the church or this and that, but it's just Apostle Paul says, once again, he doesn't want allow a woman to pray or to prophesy in a public gathering, church gathering. Prophesy. Women are more than welcome to prophesy, as we are drawing closer in getting to understand what is prophecy. Let's read quickly verses 1 through verse number 5, First Corinthians, chapter 14, 1 to 5.
First Corinthians, chapter number 14, from verses 1 to 5. "Pursue love and desire spiritual gifts, but especially that you may prophesy. For he who speaks in a tongue does not speak to men, but to God; for no one understands him. However, in the spirit he speaks mysteries. But he who prophesies speaks edification and exhortation and comfort to men. He who speaks in a tongue edifies himself; but he who prophesies edifies the church. I wish you all spoke with tongues, but even more that you prophesied."
Amen, hold it. Apostle Paul says, "This is what it desires, this is what you wish." Said, "All of us to do what? But all important, what everybody to prophesy." Please underline, he wishes all of us can speak in tongue. But now knowing that there's a prophecy or minister of prophecy, and he carries more weight, he says, "No, I want all of you to prophesy, not some of you, all of you." So now, how can we do something? How can we do something to, we don't understand? To prophesy. All of us prophesy. From the beginning, when they serve to the church, the sole purpose for the Holy Spirit to be poured out was so that we can all prophesy. Is it possible that we can go and go to hell, can die and go to hell, why? Because we fail to prophesy? So of course, I didn't know what was it, to prophesy. But we expect to prophesy. Let us look at verse number 5, I believe. Verse number 5. Yeah, verse 5. "I wish you all in total can speak in tongue, but even more that you prophesied. For he who prophesies is what? Greater than who speak in tongues." Greater than who speak in tongues. Unless the tongue is interpreted. Ugo shukutige. If you are to place, speak in tongue and to prophesy on the scale which is more, which has more weight, it will be prophecy. Now, let us look at verse number three. But he who prophesies speaks what? Edification. What is edification? Is to strengthen me, are with me? And what exhortation and to comfort? Exhortation is to encourage. How often has it happened that a sudden soul felt comfortable approach you and just pour their hearts out and share with you how they felt in that moment? You would listen without you having to rehearse because you're not ready of this experience. You're going to find yourself speaking words of comfort. Where those words come from? Come from the Holy Spirit. In other words, prophecy is Holy Spirit inspired word. Holy Spirit inspired word. If I were to encourage, I cannot encourage you to be silent. I have to speak a word that is going to leave you encouraged. A kind of word that is going to take you out where you are at that point. As a mood, how I feel? How? As a humble, uti, let you be ngatap, be ngisho, be ngatap. Holy Spirit was speaking through you. You are doing what? You were prophesying. What does it take for me to prophesy? I have to have a meaningful intimate relationship with the Holy Spirit. Do not expect the Lord to use you. Uma onen klesi yo, epetoga is in bed. Klesi yo. Yegi is, ulango ngulishu, uti. Out, out of the abundance of the heart, man speaks. If inside of me, there is love, everything that's come out of my mouth is going to be what? Love. Yes, all right. It won't be possible for you to be used of the Holy Spirit in any incident. Abanyabantu, baro chogutige. Baba, in that state in their lives, which does not measure up to what they would have got prescribed. The fact that they still, the fact that they experienced the touch and the movement of the Holy Spirit. But how, no, gushanani, ngiratmin, ngan, oma ngangserbenzi, is, is. Abantu bakolle into ekwa ekres of the house. But inka band. Be, be microphone, be kula, be, 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 kwenze, gizi, atam, matunyesa, mbese, manengya, puma, la min, ngio record.